So I believe I can start because it takes some time. I can start the recording announcement.
This conference will now be recorded.
Am I ready to go, Chris? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This open meeting of the Auburn, Town of Auburn Board of Selectment is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, which suspends a requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting is to allow for public comment under general items. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 and enter access code 235-235-861. Or you can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials have been provided to members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As a preliminary matter, this is Doreen Goodrich, Chair of the Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town manager Julie Jacobson?
Yes.
Assistant Town Manager Ed Kasanovic?
Yes.
Administrative Assistant Sharon Kwiatkowski?
Yes.
Okay. We do have a few public hearings in there, and there is a call-in number for those who want to speak during those public hearings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Also, please note that all votes for this meeting shall be conducted by a roll-call vote. Having said that, this meeting is called to order. I remind everyone that this meeting, under general open meeting law, that this meeting is being recorded. Moving on to the agenda. We have a public hearing for AMG Enterprises LLC Auto Repair License at 651 Southbridge Street. Is there a representative for that, this hearing here?
Yes, there is. My name is Adam Genario.
Okay, hold on, please. So seeing that there is a representative here, is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Mr. Bertheum opens the hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. LaLiberty is the second by a roll-call vote. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we have an application for AMG Enterprises LLC Auto Repair License at 451 Southbridge Street. Could the representative please identify themselves and spell your name for the record?
Yes, thanks. My name is Adam Genario. That's A-D-A-M. Last name Genario, G-E-N-U-A-R-I-O. I'm the representative from AMG Enterprises, DBA Midas Auto Experts.
Okay. And can you just tell us just briefly a little bit about what your intent is and why you're here before the board tonight?
Sure. We are just purchasing the existing location from the existing owner and franchisee. We'll be doing the same work that they've been doing for the last 25 years there. No different work, just a change in ownership.
Okay. Do members have any questions or comments for the applicant? I don't see any. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second to close the hearing again by a roll-call vote. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, permissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? By a roll-call vote. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We wish you the best of luck in your new operation. Adam, thank you for coming, for being on the call.
Thank you.
So moving on, we have, under Communications, we have the Public Safeties Advisory Committee Recommendation on Police and Fire Facilities. Agenda item 5A, which is the same item, just so that the town manager can add, under her comments, anything at the same time as their motion to move up Agenda 5A to go along with 3A.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we're on the Public Safeties Advisory Committee Recommendation on Police and Fire Facilities, and I believe we have Chairman Kennedy on the call as well, but I'm going to ask Ms. Jacobson to begin.
Certainly. Thank you through the chair, to the members of the board and the public. We first of all want to thank our Public Facilities Advisory Committee for all the work that they have done, and they worked very hard throughout all of last year, and they met a couple of times, most recently, to talk about what we could potentially, or what they would like to recommend to town administration, that we would then recommend to the Board of Selectment for action, potentially, on a public safety facility or facilities. So you have in your packets a letter from the Chair of the Committee, Kevin Kennedy, who you just mentioned, who is on this call as well. So in a minute, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Kennedy and let him just summarize for you the position and recommendation of the committee, but I just want to make sure that we thank all the members of the committee. There's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and they've had some great discussions, several, several meetings, where they've asked some excellent questions, town administration, Ed and myself, as well as our public safety chiefs, and their command staff have worked hard to try to get them responses to whatever questions they had so they could make an informed recommendation to you. So we thank all of them for all of their hard work. So what we have before you tonight is a letter, so I'm going to let Kevin Kennedy explain the letter so the public understands what the recommendation was, and then we're happy to continue the conversation with the board after that, as far as what the next steps are and what we perceive as the timeline, which I believe is also in your packet. So if that's okay through the chair, invite Mr. Kennedy to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Good evening, Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
You can go ahead. You have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, I have to apologize. I don't have a copy of my letter in front of me this evening, but to summarize the Public Safety Facilities Committee, going back, I think even into the previous year, we started our process by looking at the current state of the public safety facilities in the community. And sort of our mandate was to see where those facilities were, what could be done with them relative to renovations, expansion, or utilizing the existing sites. And just to keep this brief, I know you've had some presentations from the architects that the town has hired, and some presentations from Chief Coleman, Chief Sloukas, relative to the state of the facilities. The outcome really was that we looked at all three of those facilities, realized that they were, all three facilities did not meet the current needs of the public safety community, did not meet the current standards of public safety facilities. And when we looked at whether those facilities were able to be renovated, we found that none of them were in a position to be renovated, and that all of the existing sites were not capable of supporting a new facility. So we'd kind of come to the position that the best course of action, and what the committee had recommended, was that we look at the prospects of a centralized public safety facility that would contain the fire operations, as well as all police operations, under one roof. And at the time, we had made that determination based on the reviews and the experts, and it was sort of, at that point, it was the next piece was to, well, what do we have for available sites within the community? And as Town Manager has said many, many times, we're in a bit of a position in that there is not any town-owned properties that meet the criteria that we would need to build our facility. And you have those criteria that are listed in front of you, that's based on what the architects, what the department heads have said, and those are basically summarized, without getting into the ones that are talking about grade and ledge and things of that nature, but a centrally located facility that would be able to respond to all parts of the town. And a learning process through this is that there are industry standards out there, not so much for the police profession, as they're in their cruisers in a mobile capacity in their respective sectors of town, but for the fire department, there are insurance industry standards and national fire standards for how quickly they can respond to all parts of the community. So the site that would be needed would need to be somewhat centrally located. You would have to be, you know, accessible to main thoroughfares, and that's what would be needed to, in a minimum of 4.5 acres in size, to fit the facility. Now, town administration presented the committee with basically four options as how to proceed, and why this was the right time to put this before our town leadership, and then ultimately, if approved, before the residents of the community as to this process would begin. And so as a committee, we're asking, you know, we're putting this forward with our recommendations. We do believe that a centralized public safety facility is in the best interest of the residents of the Town of Auburn. It is needed, and certainly there will be a host of questions that will come up relative to the existing facilities, the existing sites, and through community outreach, you know, and hopefully, once we get over this pandemic hurdle, we can actually bring people into the facilities and show them where their deficiencies are, to show them why this is an important project and a much-needed project. So I'm going to defer to the Town Manager relative to the options and the proposed timelines, if you will, as to how we envision this going forward, and even Mr. Kasanovic may be able to explain, I think we had some questions as to what the timing of this and why this was the right time to put this project forward. I think between the Town Manager and the CFO, they can much better explain the process and the timing of why our recommendation is before you tonight.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it back over to the Town Manager, but I hope he'll stay on the call, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. That was an excellent, for someone who didn't have the letter in front of him, that was that was great. You hit all the major points, so thank you so much. And again, thanks for your leadership on the committee. So at our last meeting, we did present to the committee four different options on timelines, and without going through all of them, I'll just give you the headlines of them. One was, two of them were very aggressive, which would be trying to get this done and onto a ballot for May and onto town meeting for May. The committee agreed that that was an unrealistic expectation, to be able to get all the community outreach and education that we need to do to make those timelines. If this project has any chance of moving forward, we all recognize that we absolutely have to educate the voters of the community, be able to answer their questions, be able to present the information, and as Kevin pointed out, hopefully, for those who want to tour the facilities, to be able to give them a chance to get into those facilities. Right now, with COVID, that's not an option, but if we push that timeline out, it will be a better option. So what we looked at and what the committee finally agreed upon was what we called Option Four. And Option Four was an extended timeline with what we call a conditional RFP. So working with Town Council Bob Henigan, we have been able to determine that we could issue an RFP for the purchase of land conditional upon approvals from both the voters on a ballot question and then authorization to borrow from town meeting. And in other words, if we put out, normally, under circumstances, if you put out an RFQ for land, you're expected to have the resources available and the financial wherewithal to cause on that land if you decide to purchase it. We would not have the authority to cause on the land until we received approval from town meeting and from the voters for a debt exclusion vote. So we came up with, again, this chicken and egg, how do you do this? How do you come up with a dollar amount that you can tell the public what this total project cost is when you don't know what land you're purchasing? So we are not able to go out and just make an offer to a property. Under Mass General Law, you have to go out to bid for that, or we could go eminent domain, which is not recommended for a number of reasons, the timing, the cost, and the extensive litigation that could potentially ensue. So the best route is to put out an RFP that is conditional upon getting approval. So as Kevin just pointed out, and your letter points out, there is a list of criteria that we have come up with through the consultant and the fire chief, who I see as on, Chief Coleman, and the police chief, as well as Tecton. And as you can see, it's pretty clear, it's a minimum usable acres of 4.5, the site should be reasonably rectangular. Anyway, there's a whole list, so those would be incorporated into an RFQ. So our estimate is, so if you look at, in your packet, the preliminary draft timeline, so I can show that to the public, and I can also, if need be, I'm happy to have Mike Marino make me a presenter, and I can pull it up on the screen, but I think it's in your packet, which is pretty easy, so I can go through this really quickly. So what we would recommend would be, oh, I am a, all right, let me see. Made a presenter, let's see. Give me one minute, and I'll pull this up. There we go. Can everybody see this? All right. So if you look, starting over at column A, you're going to see the dates running down the side. Across the top, you're going to see all of the tasks that would be required. So here we are, column B, January 11th, we are presenting the committee's recommendation to the board. What we would be recommending is at the January 25th meeting, we actually invite Tecton, which is the consultant, in to present to the board some of their updated findings. We initially thought we would do all that tonight, but thankfully, when the committee voted to go with an extended timeline, we gave us a little bit more time to plan for the next meeting. Once Tecton presents it, our recommendation through Ed and I would be to have either joint meetings or separate meetings with the finance committee to talk about the various funding options for this. And then in April, if the board, if the discussion goes positive, and the board and the finance committee decide they want to move forward, we would issue an RFP probably somewhere around April or May, again, a contingent RFP, which would be contingent upon a town meeting vote and a debt exclusion vote. So that would generate, hopefully, the interest from property owners to let us know if their property, they're willing to sell it, and if so, what are they willing to sell that for? That will give us an actual dollar amount that which we can add to the cost of the facility itself. So we'll have the land cost, as well as the building cost, for public purposes. So then, once we know what that land is and what it will cost, we're estimating that sometime between June and October, we would have a number of different public meetings. Some are focused on town meeting members, and some are focused on the ballot question for debt exclusion. So if you back up the fall town meeting, let's say the fall town meeting was on October 26th, which you can see on column K. If you back that up, also in October, we would probably have one final meeting just for town meeting members to attend, so if they had any questions prior to that vote in October, we could have a meeting and address their issues. Backing that up, we would recommend a special election ballot question on a debt exclusion, probably around September 28th. That's about a month before the town meeting in the fall. To hit that September 28th date, if you look back on column G, on either August 9th or 16th, the board would take a vote about placing a debt exclusion vote on a special election ballot. And by August 24th, the board would have to provide a ballot question that they voted on to the town court office to get on a ballot for September 28th. So again, we were holding special election on September 28th, and then the town meeting on October 26th. Now, if you move over a little bit here, this then just carries out the purchase and the land closing, then could be, once we have the funds to do so and the approval to do so, that could be done in November. Then the facility design takes about eight months, and I'm trying to move this down here. I don't know if you can all see this. And then if you move it over, we have, then the design would take place, and again, that's once you know the land that you're designing for and the site work that you're designing for, and then you'd have a construction period that would bring us to approximately September of 2024, when this would be completed. So that's the timeline through the chair, and we would recommend that we start proceeding along this timeline, even though it seems like there's a lot of time between now and a debt exclusion vote in September. There's a lot to be done between now and that time, and as you can see, there's many, many steps that have to be taken before we can even get to that point, including public outreach. So I will stop, and if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Before I open it up for board questions, I see that Chief Coleman is on the call. Does the chief want to add anything before we open it up to questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am all set for this evening. I just want to thank the Town Manager and Mr. Kennedy for excellent presentations.
Thank you. So I'm now going to open it up to board comments or questions. Does anyone have anything?
Madam Chair, I just have a quick comment. I was relieved when I was on the phone with Town Manager, I mentioned this the other day, to see that the committee wasn't going forward with a really aggressive plan to put this on the ballot in May. I think that would have been too soon. I am still a little hesitant about trying to put this on the ballot in August, but as the Town Manager said, there's still some things to do in between now and then, so I think we'll have a better idea of how prepared we are. So I just want to thank Mr. Kennedy for putting this together and putting a great presentation for us, and for the Town Manager and all the big towns work on this.
Thank you. Do any other board members have anything to add?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Bertheum?
Would there be any use for eminent domain, or is that an option anywhere? Or have they looked at any sites that the town would use that, or can it not be used anymore? I'm not up on legal, but I do know that that's something that has gotten used in other towns.
Through the chair, it is still legal to use an eminent domain proceeding. It's very time-consuming to do that. It requires a lot of legal work. It can be very expensive because of that, and it can end up dragging a process on for several years because you can end up in litigation over the final purchase price that may be disputed by the property owner. So right now, Mr. Bertheum, our recommendation is not to proceed with an eminent domain taking, but rather to go through the process of seeking bids or proposals from landowners who are interested in selling to us, as opposed to us identifying a parcel and trying to take it by eminent domain, which still has to be done by market value. So right now, that's not anything we're recommending. I suppose, you know, down the road, if we didn't get any takers for the RFP, we talked with the committee about this, you know, a couple of options, is that something we can consider? We could. Again, it's expensive. I think at that point, we may try to maybe look at a different area or a different criteria for the site and maybe try it one more time. So right now, that's not an option that we think is preferable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to thank you for your report, and I too feel that it would have been truly aggressive to go forward with the May town meeting, May town election. Generally, when we're looking at a ballot question, even August can be concerning because so many people are on vacation, but I think we're just going to have to see how this plays out. We don't know what COVID will look like in August. People may still be home, working and learning remotely, so I will wait to see how this plays out.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Through the chair, based on the timeline we came up with, we actually wouldn't recommend having the ballot question until the end of September. The board would have to take votes in August to get the ballot question prepared, but to your point exactly, August being summer, being vacation, it might be difficult to get people to vote, so we are not recommending to hold a special election until sometime in September.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else at this meeting want to add anything before we finish up? Seeing none, again, Chairman Kennedy, I just want to thank you for your work on this. I know that doing everything remotely and the Zoom meetings and not having, you know, the public in the room there to share their thoughts with you is difficult, but you guys have done great work, and we thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Jacobson, did you have anything to add to this before we close?
I think the only thing I would add is that we will put a presentation from Tecton on the board agenda for January 25th, your next board agenda, where they could come in and give you some updated numbers, some updated information that they shared with the committee at their meeting, I believe in early December. So we'll definitely bring them in on the 25th.
Great, thank you. If there's nothing else on this item, we're going to move on to Communications, item 3B, and I see also that the Town Manager has Agenda Item 5B that should be taken at the same time. Is there a motion to move up Agenda 5, Item 5B with Agenda Item 3B?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second by a roll-call vote. Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Capenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So before we begin with this item, as Chair, I will be turning the gavel over to, excuse me, Vice Chairman LaLiberty, based on guidance given to me by the Massachusetts Ethics Commission, although I am not a direct abbot, because I live in cooperative living where the entire property is considered an abouter, I do need to recuse myself. They did advise any time that there is a change, any change to property, there is a potential for financial impact because of the valuation of the property, be it positive or negative. So therefore, I am required to recuse myself So therefore, I am required to recuse myself on any hearings or meetings to do with this Chapter 61 notification. Because we are not in person, I have asked generally that you would need to step out of the room because no one can come get me. Mr. LaLiberty will send me a text message when this item is complete. So I'll now shut off my camera, shut off my microphone and turn this over to Mr. LaLiberty.
All right. Thank you. Well, she's already gone. Actually, I'm in town hall, so I do have the gavel tonight. But I will turn this over to the town manager to speak on, yeah, on this. What are we on, communications, 3B?
Yes. Thank you, through the chair, thank you very much. So tonight is not a public hearing, but tonight is just informational meeting, transmitting formally and for the public to see the Chapter 61 notification that we received for the intent to sell land at 50 Washington Street. And I just want to acknowledge Clayton Williams and I believe Steve O'Connell, both on this call representing the developers. And just to let you know, tonight, we're not going to go through all the details of this because that would be done in a public hearing. But I want to acknowledge their presence, that they're here and thank them for, they've been great for us to work with, they've shared a lot of information with us. And I know there's more information yet to come. So I'm going to just briefly go through your packet. So there's quite a few pieces to this. For those of you who've been through this process before, it is a process that is under Mass General Law, Chapter 61, which means that property that was previously exempt or is currently exempt under Chapter 61 for tax purposes, whether it be agricultural or forestry, is, has to follow a process whereby if they receive what you call a bona fide purchase and sale agreement, the community in which the land is located has to receive a formal notification of the intent to sell the land. So there are all kinds of requirements that have to be met by the seller in order to notify the town. So on December 14th, the town received the notice of intent to sell land from the seller's attorney. And under the law, it checked off a few of the boxes that needed to be done. The notice came to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Assessors, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and it also went to the state's DCR. And there were several pieces that are required in that notice of intent that were fulfilled. But under the town's policies, Chapter 61 policy that the board approved in 2018, we are also required to submit this notice of intent to be reviewed by our town council. So we received it on the 14th. We immediately sent it to Town Council, Robert Henigan, who reviewed the entire package, and it's a pretty thick package, as you can see, just to make sure that the notice of intent was so-called proper and complete. And as you know from your packet, and I have copies of it in your packet, Attorney Henigan wrote a letter to me explaining what parts of the notice of intent he believed were so-called insufficient, meaning most of them were not major, but there were a couple of things that were insufficient. And that included having to provide a specific type of map, having to provide an affidavit of when it was sent, which we did get the other day. I think the most significant parts of this as to why it is considered insufficient is because under Mass General Law, Chapter 61, purchase and sales agreements cannot have any conditions in them over which the town has no control. Because that would potentially prevent the buyer, who, again, it's Eastland Partners is the proposed buyer, from moving forward with it, just in case they didn't get what they needed from the town. So the attorneys for the buyer, which again is Eastland Partners, and Eastland Partners is the developer that, number one, and most importantly, purchased 190 Washington Street, which is what we always called the Dartmouth property. It is the abutting parcel to 50 Washington Street. So, and we can get into that a little further. So they are the proposed buyer. The seller is James Cutting and Laurel Post. Those are the owners of record. And the land is approximately 30 acres. I won't go into the entire thing because we'll do that at a hearing, but all of the information you need on the land, on the zoning, on the potential, some wetlands, some encroachment issues, everything is in your packet tonight. So to go back to Attorney Henigan's letter, so the, if this notice of intent was not deemed to be insufficient, our timeline under state law is to take the date that this was sent to us. So even though we received it on the 14th, it was sent by certified mail on the 10th. And you add one day to that, so that December 11th. So if it was sent on the 10th, you add one day. So December 11th becomes the trigger date for your 120 days, within which the town has to, A, exercise their right to purchase, B, waive their right to purchase, or C, assign their right to purchase to a not-for-profit conservation group that would have to then purchase it. If the town does decide that they want to exercise their right and purchase it under the law, they have to purchase it under the exact terms and conditions and price that is in the purchase and sales agreement. And you may recall, we went through this process with Southhold Road back in 2014. So it's a very similar process. That was a Chapter 61A, which was agricultural. This is just Chapter 61. So under this, there is a rollback tax that has to be paid to the town upon the sale. And I believe that it goes back five. And the rollback tax that was calculated by the assessor was approximately $92,000. So we have a, we have a potential date of December 11th that counts our days forward, which is a timeframe that we're going to assume we have. But I would tell you that tomorrow, there's a meeting with town council, the attorney for the buyer and the attorney for the seller, and they're going to be discussing the deficient aspects of the notification. And we believe that we'll be getting a new notice from them, which will trigger the start of the 120 days. That being said, we don't want to wait until we get that notice. We want to continue. So our recommendation is going to be that on January 25th, which would be your next meeting, that you hold a public hearing, start your public hearing. With the Southhold Road project, we had several of them, so it was continued. But our recommendation is that you hold a public hearing on the 25th, at which point the town can explain to the public this whole process. We can show you a nice timeline of how this would work. And we would also ask the proposed buyer, Eastland Partners, who's willingly agreed to commit and explain to the board what it is they intend to do with the land. Now, right now, in the purchase and sales agreement, it's fair to say that the proposal was fairly generic when it said, the buyer had, excuse me, the seller said that the buyer would be using it for commercial purposes. And that's something that's going to be discussed with the attorneys this week. We've explained to Eastland Partners, Clay and Logan Huffman, the president, that we need to see more information on what they're going to do with it. Because for the Board of Selectmen to make an informed decision, you need to know what is the use of the land. So the developers working on that, they certainly are willing to show and share with us what they're looking at. I can tell you just generically that of the 30 acres, the developer is interested in donating back to the town approximately 20 acres of the back part of the parcel because that does butt up against other town-owned land. We could use it to extend our walking trails and to extend our conservation area. There is a small sliver, approximately two acres of a triangular piece of land, of that land, that's right along Route 20, that butts right up against 190 Washington Street, that the Dartmouth property that they purchased. So that corner would help facilitate access to 190 Washington Street. So that's why that one corner is important to them. And then for developable land, there's only about six acres of developable land near Route 20 that the buyer would propose to use for an existing, an existing zoned use. So they wouldn't be looking for anything that wasn't allowed by right. And again, I don't want to get into that because that would be the developer explaining all of that to us. But that is the potential use, using six acres for some type of unallowable commercial use. And another two acres in the bottom right, bottom left corner for ease of access and helping them to get onto 190 Washington Street. I would tell you, both 50 Washington, which is the land we're talking about, and 190 Washington are very challenging sites to develop. There's a lot of wetlands, there's quite a bit of fill that is needed. I believe it was somewhere in the order of three yards or so of fill, just a lot of fill. So have the developer, being in that business and being in the construction business, and also point out, this is the same developer that's working on the Blaker Street project, the reserves on Blaker Street, the 320 unit project. So they do have extensive experience, they have the equipment, and they are able to work with the fill that is going to be needed to make both sites work. That being said, I'm going to go back quickly to the process. So in addition to having town council review this, our process also involves that we send this out to the boards and commissions and ask them to come, not all of them, but the relevant ones, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, Economic Development, and ask them to come back with a recommendation to us as to whether they would like the board to consider exercising their option to purchase it or they are not going to recommend that we do that. Likewise, we ask all of our department heads if they would like to exercise the right to purchase this or not. I'll be upfront and say we have most of the department head recommendations already in. I know we looked at this, it follows up on the discussion we just had for public safety facility. We looked at this, and for a joint public safety facility, this site does not work. It is too far in the corner, so to speak, of Auburn. It doesn't work for response times for the fire department. The police chief has said that if it was a single sole police station, that they could probably maybe make something like that work, although it would involve a lot because it's right on a four-lane strip of state land, so the highway. So that would be a bit of a challenge. But it does not work for a public safety facility giving response times. So we, this week, should be hearing back from the Planning Board, Conservation Commission. And I think the Open Space Committee already voted on it. I don't have anything in writing from them yet, but I think they were interested in having some of the land, if not all of it, as conservation. But I think they were interested in having the back portion of it, at least some of it, as conservation, which the developer has indicated a keen interest in working with the town to do that. So that being said, I think I covered hopefully everything in this. It's a long process, it's all guided by Mass General Law. Again, we'll have a timeline at the next meeting. I actually have it tonight, but I won't share it because the timeline may shift. If the lawyers get together tomorrow and determine that a new notice is required to be given to us, then that 120 days will start on that new notice. But we're recommending that we start the hearing anyway because we don't want to be up against the clock. Let's say the town decided, the board decided, they want to exercise your option and they want to purchase this. Well, sorry about that. In order to do that, you need to have a town meeting vote that gives you authorization to spend the money and appropriate the money to buy the land. And we don't currently have that. We don't have $450,000 set aside and earmarked for the purchase of this land. So if the board decided you want to exercise your option, we would have to have a special town meeting likely in March because 120-day clock ends on April 11th, which is a Saturday. So you'd have to have the special town meeting, which means having a warrant, which means opening the warrant. So there's a major timeline that has to be met. Ashley, Mike, if you're there, would you mind just letting me share my screen for one moment?
You should still be presenter.
Okay. So let me go back to screen. Thank you, Mike. Let's see. Okay, let me just pull up. So that was the other one. Let's see. There we go. So here is 50 Washington Street timeline. Again, very basic, we're going to move through it. You can see the December 11th date that is pending, but let's assume that's the date that we have to go with. We're over here, we would, we're right here, we're on notifying the board in January. We're recommending that tonight you take a vote to have a public hearing on this on January 25th. Even though it's not required under the law, under our policy, we highly recommend that we notify all abutters within 500 feet of that hearing. So we would get that notice out as soon as the board took the vote to move forward. You may have a couple of hearings, but let's assume the board decided that you did want to go forward and purchase the land. It's a very tight timeframe. You would have to make a decision by February 8th to exercise or to move forward if you're interested in exercising your right. You'd have to then take a vote on the 8th or the 22nd of February to open and close the warrant. We'd have to mail the warrant on March 2nd. The latest you could have that would probably be March 16th. And then by March 29th, or April 5th, one of those two dates, the board would have to vote to exercise their right following the special town meeting in March. That would actually give you the authorization to purchase the land. At that point, everything would have to be done, including the notice to the Registry of Deeds and to the seller that the town was interested. If the town decides they're not interested in buying the land or assigning the right to somebody else to buy the land, then we still have to give due notice by that April 10th date to the seller that we are, the town has voted to waive their right. So that's pretty much the timeline. Let's see. We would bring that timeline to the public at your public hearing on January 25th. And at that point, Clayton Williams and his team would hopefully be prepared to present what their plans would be for that land. And then the board would have the information they need to make a decision. Do you want to allow that project to go forward? And I would say that it's going to create jobs and generate tax revenues and has the opportunity to give us 20 acres of backland. Or, you know, again, distinct possibility, does the town want to buy it? At this point, we're not finding any immediate use for that land, and I mean immediate in the next five to 10 years. But it doesn't mean down, you know, 20 years from now, they might not be a use for it. But right now, given its location and the challenge of that site, right now, we're not hearing from anyone that there is a use for it. Again, I don't want to speak ahead of time. The Planning Board and the Conservation Commission are voting on it this week, and they may feel differently and will share that with you at the hearing on the 25th.
Through the chair. Ms. Jacobson, I did take part in the Open Space Meeting vote just before this meeting. And we're certainly interested in what can be worked out with the buyer as far as the back, you know, maybe some walking trails or some of the land out and back there. But we did vote not to pursue an option to purchase.
Yeah, that's great to know. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. I want to thank Open Space Committee, Planning Board and Conservation Commission for moving this forward so quickly. We know this timeline is really tight, so we appreciate doing that. So we'll hear from the other two, but so far, we have no recommendations to purchase it. But again, we'll wait until the end of this week.
Do any other board members have any comments or questions? Seen them. All right. So I think next up is just to schedule for our next meeting, which is January 25th, a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
Through the chair, can you, just, sorry, do me a favor, can we also set a time with that motion? So whoever makes that, the board meeting would normally be starting at 6:00. I don't know if you want to schedule it for 6:15 or 6:10, but just make sure you put the time in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we should add a time at 6:05 or something to allow for delay. But again, I'll entertain that motion from a board member.
I'll make a motion to, I hope I'm saying this right, make a motion to propose a, what's a public hearing for the intent to sell 50 Washington Street for our next meeting date. Is it January?
25th.
20?
25th.
25th. At 6:15.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Berthium and a second for Mr. Ren. By a roll call vote, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the vice chair votes yes. So we have a scheduled public hearing for January So we have a scheduled public hearing for January 25th at 6:15. All right. Do members have anything else on the, actually, we already would have done it. I'll call the chair back now. All right. Madam Chair, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. So we are moving on the agenda with Board of Selectmen general items. We have gift acceptance and to the library from an anonymous library patron, an amount of $20 to be used at the discretion of the director. Is there a motion to accept with gratitude?
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second by a roll call vote. Excuse me. Mr. Bertheam?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have a donation from DDIS, from Mastmans, in the form of 10 cases, which equals 120 bottles of 16-ounce hand sanitizer. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertheam?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, stepped away for a sec.
That's okay. Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. And then to the fire rescue department, we have a few of them. So hold on one second. Come on, hold on one second. Sorry, I had a visitor when I stepped away. No, 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 get down. To the fire department gift account from, from, in the amount of $50 from Ann R. Spazianti, and from Christopher Sacco, in the amount of $50, Michael Roach in the amount of $35, and Kevin J. Hussey in the amount of $250, and those total $350 to the fire rescue department. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by a roll call vote. Mr. Bertheam?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. We have no proclamations and recognitions. Under Town Manager Items, we've already taken care of Agenda Item 5A and 5B, so moving on, Agenda Item 5C, we have a request for the vote, for a vote of the Board of Selectmen for a partial waiver of permit fees for Penrose Properties for the redevelopment project at the former Julia Bancroft Elementary School. Mrs. Jacobson, please.
Through the chair, thank you. So I want to acknowledge first of all Caleb Moody, our building commissioner, has been patiently on, waiting also, so he's here, and at some point, I'm going to see if he has any comments as well, and also Carmen Chung, who is the project manager from Penrose for the Julia Bancroft property. So just to give the board a little background on this, so first of all, as you can see, the Mary D. Stone School project is moving along great. It's, it's amazing. Penrose is doing a tremendous job. And the closing for the Julia Bancroft property is scheduled for the end of January. So as we did with the Mary D. Stone School, we had come to the Board of Selectmen, I believe it was last April or May, and asked the board for a $30,000 building permit fee waiver to show our support for the project. We really need senior housing. This was a comprehensive permit application that went into the state from Penrose several years ago, and we did say that if we could do fee waivers, we would consider them. And working with the building commissioner and Caleb, all the analysis he did, he had determined that a $30,000 fee waiver from Mary D. would be feasible. Mary D., just by way of comparison, brought in $138,910 in building permit fees. $30,000 of those were waived. Julia Bancroft, building permit fees are a little higher, project costs a little, little larger. The building permit fees are $165,852. We are recommending the same $30,000 fee waiver for this project that we did for Mary D. Again, we want to show the Commonwealth, the state, and the public that we support this project, and we desperately need senior housing. So Caleb feels that he can absorb that fee waiver without impacting his operations. So if I may, I just want to turn to Caleb and see if you have any comments, Caleb, or...
Thank you, Julie. No, I don't really have any comments. I would agree with, Julie presented it very well. I feel that the $30,000 reduction is, will still allow me to, it won't cause any impact to our operations as far as if we have to add additional inspectors or anything like that. I think the fee, even with the reduction, is, is more than enough to cover our costs and the town's costs.
Thank you, Caleb. And I should have pointed out that we do have a letter in your packet from Penrose requesting the town consider a fee waiver. And again, I can't say enough about working with Carmen and her whole team at Penrose, and Charlie Adams, the regional vice president. They've been tremendous to work with. We're anxious to be able to get in and get a tour of Mary D., and we're very anxious to move forward on the closing of Julia Bancroft. We did sign, and I sent it to the board a couple weeks ago, just want to say it publicly, we did sign an early access agreement with Penrose to enable them to get into Julia Bancroft and start on some of the interior work. So they're ready to go, and they are going, they're moving. They started last week. And I believe next week, the town will go in and remove any final items that we've been using, that building to store. And then hopefully the closing, Carmen, if you can correct me, is it around the 27th or so of January?
That's definitely our goal, to get to closing at the 27th, and get our contractor out there started.
Great, thank you. And then Carmen, how long will be the construction period? Was it 18 months?
We're pushing the contractor to do 17 months, so we're really hoping that by next July, that we'll have Bancroft redevelopment complete.
Wow, that's great. And can I ask you while you're here, also what, what the timeframe is for Mary D. Stone School, because that's really going on so fast?
Yes. So with Mary D. Stone School, we're kind of working away at framing the new building right now, and if you pass by, you can kind of see, it's a lot of kind of thick construction right now. We're aiming to complete by the end of October, early November of this year. So we'll, we'll start leasing activities probably a couple months before then, to get kind of excitement and energy up and start a waitlist. So we'll definitely be in close contact with Julie and other...
We are kidding Super Mario. Oh, yeah, we are kidding Super Mario, baby. Oh, yeah.
I think that was a...
Sorry about that. Go, go ahead, Carmen.
Yeah, so we're, we'll probably start leasing activities three to four months before then.
Great. And also, I believe we have, I know we have information on our website for how to get in touch with Penrose, and they have it as well, for anyone who's interested in getting on the waiting list for either of these housing. So anyway, to go back to it, we are requesting that the board consider and vote tonight for a fee waiver of $30,000. Caleb, did you have something to add? I see your light on.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. I just want to make one comment on one point in regards to the fee reduction. This doesn't affect in any way our private contractors, the plumbing and gas, those kind of inspectors. This is just strictly building. So all those, all those costs would not be affected, where we have to pay out to private contractors.
No, that's a great point. Thank you for clarifying that.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we waive a portion of the permit fees for Penrose Properties for the redevelopment project at the former Julia Bancroft Elementary School in the amount of $30,000.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, by a roll call vote, Mr. Bertheam?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you for waiting, you guys.
Thank you, members of the board, and thank you, Julie, for helping us with this. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson, do you have anything else under Town Manager Items?
I don't have anything else. I just wanted to mention, because Ed Koznovich is on the call also. It's funny, when someone gets off the call on your screen, I'm sure you all noticed it, all the, all the tiles shift, and I keep looking to see where he went. He was there a minute ago, there he is. So just, Ed is, will be working with Penrose to make sure that we get the, the purchase price submitted to the town. And when they close, Bob Henigan will be working with them on all the closing documents. And then we'll be working with Penrose also on some of the upgrades to the playground and field areas. As the weather starts getting better, we can start looking at that. I, I would tell you that the playground at Mary D. needs far more work and actual replacement than the playground at Julia Bancroft, so we're going to be looking at that to see. I think we may have to put more money toward the, the Mary D. as far as a replacement. It's, it's pretty significant cost, and Penrose has been great, they're willing to work with us. Ed, did you have anything to say on the, on the funds or anything coming in?
Well, like Mary D., through the chair, at closing, we received $45,000. We, on both properties, upon execution, we received the full value of the $50, $5,000 deposit for each school. So net due to the town at the time of closing is 45. We currently have $45,000 set in reserve for Mary D. We will add to that by, by receiving another 45. It gives us some flexibility to address some of the concerns that a town man just, just raised with you tonight. We will continue to work with Penrose to try to minimize any expense of those funds that we're currently holding on, so. And in addition, by accelerating the closing of, of Julia Bancroft, we won't have to expend the amount of money that town meeting has voted annually towards the maintenance of those buildings. So hopefully, maybe we can convert some of that to, to get some of the, some of those projects complete.
Thanks. Thanks, Eddie.
Is there anything else on this?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, we have Board of Selectmen member items, although we don't have anyone who's signed up for anything. Do members have anything? So seeing none. We have two sets of minutes here before, for us, so I will take them separately. We have the minutes of November 23rd. I was not at the meeting, so I'll ask Vice Chairman Liberty to ask members if there are any corrections or omissions, and then he can accept them as presented. You just have to turn your volume up. You have to unmute.
Sorry about that, everyone. I see, Madam Chair, when I got your message, I thought that you...
We are kidding Super Mario, baby. I love...
All right, there we go. Anyway, do members have any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, I'll accept the November meeting as, as read. Turning it back over to the chair.
You're muted, Doreen. We have the December 14th minutes. Do members see any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as written. So I believe that is it. Hopefully, we can get out of the, this meeting without any additional Super Mario comments. Is there any other business before the board tonight? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mr. Bertheam?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
I want to thank Chris and Mike, too, for keeping their eye on this and helping us with these callers that come in like that.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.